Everyone would please stand for the invocation led by Commissioner Randall and the pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Connor Merk.
Our dear heavenly Father, as we come before you this night, we are so very grateful for the blessings of life, blessings that thou has given to us. We're grateful for this free land. We ask for a blessing to be upon those that serve us, the first responders, for the military that protect us and who are in harm's way each day. May thou bless them, keep them safe. We ask for a blessing be with us tonight, that we will be clear in thought and mind. We will be able to respond as we should, as we need to, to the concerns of all present. We ask again for all of those that would have, with all that we stand in need of, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Randall. Thank you, Mr. Merk. Commissioner English, will you please call the roll?
I will. Mr. Appicella?
Here.
Mr. McPherson?
Here.
Mr. Bain?
Here.
Ms. Vanuch?
Here.
Myself, Mr. Boswell?
Here.
Mr. Randall?
Here.
Madam Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Commissioner English. Now, would anyone like to state any declarations of disqualification or disclosure for today's meeting?
Yes, Madam Chair, just I'd like to state a disclosure that regarding the transfer of development rights, I did several days ago, about a week and a half ago, meet with one of the applicants, major planer this, Joe Samaha. It was just myself and him and nobody else present, just to discuss the transfer of development rights. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner McPherson. And any others? Okay. I will continue to recuse myself from item one, as previously mentioned at the last meeting. Moving on to public presentations, prior to opening it up to the public, we do have a presentation on the county transportation construction project quarterly update by Mr. Brian Council. Mr. Council?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Brian Council, Deputy Director of Public Works for Capitol Projects. Just as a matter of information, the newly created Office Capitol Projects, not only do we, do we work with the transportation projects, but we also do manage the other public facilities, parks projects, other types of buildings on behalf of the county, as well as utilities, water and sewer now. So, any questions that you may have regarding any of those, not just transportation, but any of those that I'm able to answer, I'd be happy to answer any of those as, as we get to any point in the presentation or afterwards. So, I'll go ahead and start. Just as an update, I know you guys know this, but just an update on where the Garrisonville Road Widening Project is. All the, 99.99% of the work is complete. We're just doing some last punch list items that are very small and final VDOT closeout. There's a process that VDOT uses to close out the projects, and we're in that process, and we should have that project completely closed out over the next week or so, but the project is open and, to the traveling public. Brook Road, traffic, transportation improvements, you guys are probably aware that Brook Road is currently closed at the bottom southern end of the Aquai District, and as it, as you go into the, I guess it's the Falmouth and George Washington Districts, that's going to be closed until about the middle of January, while they, they use the entire right-of-way through there to more expediently do the improvements that are planned through there. If you recall, that project was originally bid, and the bids came in pretty high. So, one of the cost-saving measures that we did was we, we worked with VDOT to be able to close the road, so they could, they could use a shorter duration, which kept them on site, less duration, and brought the cost down. But that's, that's underway, and what they're doing now is they're working on the extension of the culverts that are, that are part of the project. Belmont Ferry Farm Trail, if you've driven down River Road, you've seen that construction underway. This is the portion that links the Falmouth Beach area to just on the other side, the downstream side of the Route Three, Route Three Bridge. They've put in a lot of the drainage structures, and some of the grading has been done. Poplar Road and Mountain View Road intersection improvements, this, another project that was bid not too long ago, we had one bid. The one bid was a little higher than what we had budgeted, so we've moved a little bit of scope around, but for the most part, we're going to re-advertise that in a more favorable bid climate coming up this fall. Juggins Road Improvement Project, this is a roadway project associated with the new school up off of Garrisonville Road. We've done the communications realignment and some, some gas, new gas lines in there. We're getting ready to advertise this project, and we're working with VDOT to create an incentive for the contractor to really complete within his duration. Hopefully, he can, but there's, there's really no failure on this project as if we run late. That means it delays the opening of the school. The, the school doesn't have a, a contingency, a contingency plan for not being able to open, so pressures on us to get that done, but we're confident between us and VDOT, we can, we can, we can make this a, a doable project. Route One Courthouse Road Intersection Improvements, that's the intersection right outside here. There's quite a bit of work up and down both roads for that, but we're in right-of-way acquisition right now. That's, that's, that sometimes can be a timing, a time-consuming process, especially in a highly-developed intersection like that. We have a, a few more offer letters to go out, but mostly, everybody has received it, and we've had some positive feedback. Some, some are asking more questions, and, and some are not satisfied with the offers. We've met with most everybody that's, that's accepted, and we've got the paperwork all in order to start acquiring that land. There are going to be some, some, some more challenging acquisitions, though. Brea Church Road Safety Improvements, this is a transportation improvement project between US-17 and Trustlow Road. We've had all the VDOT public meetings and, and everything like that, and we're, we're starting the right-of-way process very soon, as design is pretty much complete. Belmont Ferry Farm Trail Phase Six, this is the section that will join the Jet Drive Naomi Road intersection with, with Route Three with the Boyhood Home, but it's not going to go quite to the Boyhood Home now. We've revised some drawings and submitting them back to VDOT. So, the, I think the name of the trail is probably going to change, because the alignment is going to change, and it'll stop short, as it stands right now, of the Ferry Farm.
Can, can you explain why that is the case?
To the best of my knowledge, and this is pretty accurate, the, the Boyhood Home and the county could not come to a, an agreeable path through their property. They, they had a lot of reasonable objections to where we wanted to put the trail, and, and we thought it was appropriate to bring it at least somewhere on the site, and they, they were not interested in that. So, we've changed the alignment to, to make the project viable without going onto their property. Ferry Road and Route Three Improvements, it's the intersection at Ferry Road and Route Three. There's a 7-Eleven, a McDonald's right there. That project's going to go to bid in November. It's just going to improve the overall performance of that intersection from both the Ferry Road aspect, as well as it's going to create a left turn lane from Route Three into the Boyhood Home. Onville Road Sidewalk Extension, this is going to install a sidewalk from just north of Garrisonville Road, where the intersection project a couple of years ago extended sidewalk. This is going to take it on up about 1,500 feet to the north to join, to connect some of the denser residential development there with the Garrisonville Road. Some of the items we've submitted for, for smart-scale applications for roadway funding, Enon Road is one of the ones that has recently been awarded, and we're starting that project up. But four others that we submitted, or three others that we submitted were some improvements on Winding Creek Road and Eskimo Hill, where the, from the landfill up to Route One, and then a, a roundabout or traffic easing measure at Stephanaga Mountain View Road Intersection. One of the projects of note that we're working on is Fire Station Number 14. It's on Shelton Shop Road near Garrisonville Road. If you've driven by there, you've seen that a lot of the CMU block walls going up the perimeter, some of the interior walls. Most of the slab is down. I think there's a small section of slab that's not been installed yet. They're running a little bit behind schedule due to all the bad weather we've had this, this spring and summer, and, but they've, they've got some mitigation efforts underway that will likely mitigate most, if not all, of that delay. And that's all the ones I had prepared, but I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
I've got a couple. I've got a couple for you. What's going on on 95 between, between 17 and the middle of 95?
That is the southbound Hot Lanes Extension Project.
So, it's the Hot Lanes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the other thing, is there any plans for Mountain View and Kellogg Mill Road for a light at that intersection, for the, and also up there by the church? I mean, that's a nightmare in the evenings.
Especially when there's an issue on 95.
Exactly.
Yes, sir.
So, is, is a light or anything going to be put in, or?
To my knowledge, there's, there's no plans by VDOT to, to put a light there. It's on a list that we keep of difficult situations, and as different pots of money come up, Highway Quarter Safety money, CMAC, some other things that acronyms are all over the place. But we constantly look for things to spend that money on. That is on a list. I'm not sure where it is in priority. I'm just getting involved in that, that stuff. But it is on a list. The county, county staff is aware of it. So is VDOT. It's just, depends on where it is on the priority.
I think everybody is. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Randall?
I have a quick question. It's not in relation, just relation to the commuter lot, the new commuter lot that they built for the interchange?
Yes, sir.
There's a right-turn-only lane out of there that's been blocked off for a while. We talked about this, I think, a couple of months ago. Is there, there's no reason, there's no, there's no intent to open that up and make that a right-hand? Because I come in and out of there every day, and in the afternoons, maybe for a selfish reason, it gets pretty bad to come, have to make everybody get into that center lane and wait for the light. Sometimes that light can be a long, and if everybody could make that right-hand turn out of there, it would make that a lot easier transition. So, I didn't know if VDOT had any, any means of, any intent of doing that, or what the plan was.
We've, we've brought up a number of, of alternatives there to what we believe will aid traffic in and out, and we've been, we've been, it's been confirmed that the, the plan is that it's not going to be changed. It's going to be, all the traffic's going to come in off Weiss Road, except for the right-outs onto Courthouse.
On the Courthouse, okay.
But that, that's going to be a way down the road before it's all opened up.
Did they, did they give a reason, or just because?
Traffic movement patterns, efficiency, interruption of traffic on Courthouse Road. There's, there's a list of them.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on this side? Any questions down here? Mr. Appicella?
This may be outside your purview, but do we have a no-block-the-box rule in Stafford?
You mean a rule where Stafford County prohibits that, or?
Yeah, I mean, you know, there are times of the day on Route 17, if you're trying to get out of the CVS and get on Route 17, big tractor-trailers sitting in the middle of the road, blocking traffic, not allowing you to make a left or a right, even though you've got the light.
That's correct.
So, what, what rules do we have in place to prohibit that?
Well, the first level of rules is you're not supposed to block an intersection. Okay, we know it happens all the time. Stafford's recently been successful in getting two no-block-the-intersection boxes installed. One is at, oh, it's drawing a blank now. Oh, at Route One and Trustlow Road, and that one has been enforced by tickets, as I understand it. Then, the second one that was recently installed was part of the 630 widening project at near Colonial, or at Woodcutters Road. That was in response to traffic or constituent complaints. If that can be documented by VDOT as substantial enough problem, then they will go out and put one out, out there. I don't know that that has been mentioned to VDOT by our staff, but I can, I can certainly do that and let you know what we find out.
Yeah, I, two places in particular, where you come out on McCourt Loop onto Route 17, and also the road where Lowe's is. Those, to me, are the two worst areas. I don't, Daryl, do you have any perspective there? No?
The, the second location you meant, you said Lowe's, the one out on 17?
Yeah, 17.
Okay, okay, okay. Just further up, same, same issue, just further up. There's, there's a light there, but it's still being blocked. Okay.
Well, that's the problem. You're allowed to make a left or a right, and you can't because there's a big tractor trailer sitting there.
That's right.
Second question is, again, going kind of back to 17 as an example. In today's dollars, what would it cost to construct an additional lane mile?
Well, it depends on where. If you did a lane mile on 17 eastbound, it would be terribly expensive. If you did a widening on Poplar or Hartwood Road, it would be much less expensive. Typically, if there's very little work to be done, other than a widening, you can look at about $1 million to $2 million per mile. On the more urbanized areas with lots of commercial entities, lots of communication lines, gas lines, water and sewer, you could be as much as $6 to $9 million a mile.
And that's just one side?
One side.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. McPherson?
Yes, I have one quick question. Just south on Route One, where Bell's Hill Road crosses Route One and turns into Coal Landing Road, there's some sort of construction going on there. Is that a transportation project?
No, sir. That's a utilities project.
Okay. I, I just wasn't sure. Could it look like they might have been doing a road or something? That's all I needed. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thanks.
And can you send us those slides if you haven't already?
Yeah.
Oh, we got them, okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. So, now is the public presentations portion of tonight's meeting. So, if anyone would like to come down to the podium, please state your name, address, and the district that you reside, if you know that. Tonight, the light is broken, so you'll still have three minutes, but at the three-minute time, Stacy has a fancy little bell that she'll be ringing instead of the, there we go. You'll hear that. That means that your three minutes is up, so you'll have to keep track of your own time, and, and you won't have that warning for the 60 seconds. We kind of thought that would be more distracting than, than helpful. So, just for everyone's clarification, the two public hearings on the agenda for this evening are Holly Corner Manor and the Shoreline and Streambank Erosion Amendment for the comp plan. So, if you're here to talk about those two issues, you would not come down right now. But if you want to talk about anything else, you're free to come down to the podium. Anybody? Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to close out the public presentations portion of this evening and move on to item number one on the agenda, which is the reclassification of Holly Corner Manor. And for this, I will turn it over to Commissioner Appicella.
Thanks, Madam Chairman. Mr. Harvey, item one?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is the reclassification for Holly Corner Manor, and Mike Zaraf will be giving the update presentation.
Good evening. If I could have the computer pleased, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Mike Zaraf at the Planning and Zoning Department. This is a continued public hearing for Holly Corner Manor. Just going to go through a brief summary on, on the issue. This is a proposed zoning reclassification of 48.6 acres. It's on the south side of Holly Corner Road, just to the west of Country Manor Drive and Stafford Lakes Village. It's in the Hartwood Election District. The, this is a, an image of the zoning map, and the site is highlighted in blue. The property itself is zoned A1 agricultural with no proffers. The applicant's proposing rezoning the site to R2 urban residential medium density. Surrounding the site to the east is R1 zoned property. That's in the yellow shading, and then to the north, south, and west is other A1 zone property. That's in the light green shading. The applicant's proposing to develop 120 single-family homes on the site. There'd be primary access off of Holly Corner Road, and then an interparcel connection on the southern end of the site into Stafford Lakes Village, near the intersection of Country Manor Drive and Wild Rose Drive. A public hearing was first held on this matter on September 24th. The hearing was left open and continued to this meeting. The Commission had several comments and questions. During the discussion, there were notification concerns to adjacent residents. The applicant did initially conduct a community meeting in advance of the public hearing, but there were concerns about residents not getting notice of that, of that meeting. Then also, there, due to the county's notification requirements, some of the closer adjacent property owners were not notified of the public hearing because of a open-space parcel that is between them and this subject property. So, the applicant was asked to conduct another community meeting. This map identifies the homes that the applicant delivered notice to on October 5th. That notice is in your package. They provided that notice, and also general development plan that you previously saw. On October 9th, the community, community meeting was held at the applicant's offices, which is in the England Run area. The applicant did approach the Stafford Lakes Village Community Association. They felt that the applicant had already met their obligation to hold the community meeting and was not supportive of having another one in the community center, so they did have it at their offices. The HOA did say they were going to post the meeting notice on their, and the general development plan on their website, and then also added to the next community newsletter. The applicant did inform staff that no one attended the, their, their community meeting, and they also did not get any calls on the So, there were some other comments as well that, that were raised. The Commission did question the estimated elementary school costs and requested a summary of what is included in, in the stated costs, specifically as it relates to the Moncrief Elementary School, because that's the cost that's, that's referenced, that we referenced in our report. One of the, in particular, the Commission did question if the typical school costs include buses as part of the overall improvement. Staff did forward the, the concern and question on to the school board staff. Their response, they said that the school, the cost of the rebuild development of Moncrief Elementary School, which is estimated at $36.5 million, that captures the cost to, involved in project design, the cost to acquire land, to construct the school itself, then also outfit the school with all the equipment and supplies needed for that school. It does not, buses are not included in, in a typical project cost, as the buses are not specific to one school. Then, on the next point, there were concerns expressed with the condition of Holly Corner Road with, due to its condition. It's a relatively narrow, narrow road, narrow lane widths, and then also it has sharp curves. The Commission asked staff to reach out to schools as it relates to the Transportation Division, and also gets some input from public safety. The schools Transportation Division, their response was that, you know, although the road is narrow and windy, buses do currently kind of travel that road, and, and it's not optimal, but they do make it work. That was the extent of their comments on the issue. And then regarding input from public safety, we reached out to the Fire Marshal's Office. Their concerns, their comments said that, you know, they typically, a road width of at least 20 feet is the minimum standard that they would deem acceptable from their, from what they could see, from the GIS mapping, and it, it did appear that the road width may be near 20 feet. They also note the project is served by two separate fire department access routes. You know, you do have access through, will have access through Stafford Lakes Village and then via Holly Corner Road, and they state that the Stafford Lakes Village access would comply with the minimum requirement. They, they know that to be certain. And then they say, you know, nevertheless, ensuring at least 20 feet, a 20-foot wide roadway throughout Holly Corner Road would, would be a good benefit to emergency services and is strongly encouraged.
Mike, quick question. When you said close to 20 feet, did you mean a little bit more, or a little bit less than 20 feet?
Well, they're not positive, because it was just based on a rough, kind of, we have, you know, measuring tools via GIS, and, you know, the, you know, it's not, it's not an exact measurement-
Okay.
-that we have.
Thanks.
And then on the, the last point, the staff does note that the applicant did modify their proffer analysis and proffer statement to reflect a value of, that accounts for an increased school cost. The monetary contribution offered for, for school impacts is proposed to increase from $14,037 per dwelling unit up to $14,204 per dwelling unit. The analysis and proffer statement documents are attached. You may be aware, the applicant did request a deferral after the September 24th meeting. They did request a deferral of this issue to the November 14th Planning Commission meeting, due to scheduling conflict with Mr. Shalaby. In Mr. Shalaby's absence, Kristin Johnson is here to try to address any issues that may come up. The, regarding the, the deferral request, the fact that the public hearing is still open did require the, the issue to be considered in, before the full commission, and to still hold that, that public hearing that was already stated at the last meeting. But regardless, the applicant still has that request for a deferral to the next meeting. The Planning Commission, you know, regarding the deferral, they do have three potential options. They could defer the case and keep the public hearing open again to the November 14th meeting. They could close the public hearing and still defer the, the issue to the November, November 14th meeting, but also you could close the public hearing and vote on the matter as well. And then, just as a reminder, staff does recommend approval of the case and recommend, concurrent with the proffers under ordinance 18-42, and will take any questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Zaraf. Any questions for staff? Mr. Bain?
Concerning the road width, I'm assuming that regardless of the actual width of the pavement, the road right-of-way would be 50 feet, 25 to each side of the center line for, for that particular road?
For Holly Corner Road?
Right.
It, it may not be. That's, it is an older road, so that, that 50 feet is typically a, a current standard of, you know, a current VDOT standard, 50 to 60 feet. It may not be the case, because it's, it's an older road.
Okay, thank you. So, what would it take to further investigate the actual size of the road?
It would just probably, in this situation, be a matter of probably a site visit to, to run and take measure, you know, in a few spots to-
I mean, it wasn't a concern raised by several people at the last meeting, and I know it's a little bit of effort, but it might be worthwhile, just for us and the board to know, you know, to the extent to which that is a problem.
I'm still getting some issues about the traffic, too, so, yeah.
Mike, I have a quick question. The Fire Department for Public Safety said that there was access to the existing subdivision. Do they, I'm sure they did, but taking into account, it's, it's one thing to drive down a road that doesn't have maybe cars parked on the street, kids running around, all sorts of stuff. It seems to me that a fire engine couldn't go very fast through there. There's a lot of turns, a lot of pedestrian, children trafficking, and cars. Did they bring that up at all? Any concerns about that?
Did not discuss that. I would, I would assume that the primary route would be via Holly Corner Manor, as the quickest way to get, get to this subdivision.
Right. So, that's the secondary going through that subdivision?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McPherson. Any other questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Mr. Randall?
In reference to the right-of-way that they're talking about on Holly Corner Road, there's no timeframe for the development of that. Did they, did they mention when they were going to have those improvements made?
It's-
Not in the proffer statement.
Right.
Well, that's what I'm looking at.
Yeah, it's, it's not stated within the, within the proffer.
What would be the expectation that the county would have?
Like, that's likely going to be a, I think that's going to be improvement that the county's probably going to expect prior to the first occupancy permit, but-
Is that something that-
It'd be beneficial, I think, to state, have a timing specified.
I absolutely think that, especially for the transportation, it would be important, I think, to, to put the timing in that, so that everybody knows that's an expectation before they even do much with, with the building of the properties.
That would be a, a good addition.
All right. I have one more question for you, and, and I'm, I'm asking for, for effect. Did you happen to read the letter that was sent out to these different homeowners?
Yes, I did.
Okay. What was your impression of that letter?
It's notified the property owners of the upcoming subdivision.
Of their new neighbors, right?
Right.
Do you think that there's a correlation between nobody showing up and the fact that many, maybe, many may have thought this was already a done deal?
I think may, but I, I don't want to say one way or the other.
I'm not asking you to speculate. I'm just asking, in your opinion, do you think that maybe have been a cause?
It could.
Okay. All right. Because I, when I read that letter, I, 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 myself, and I had several independent- All right, because I, when I read that letter, I, I, myself, and I had several independent parties read the letter without any much background, and they were like, "Yeah, seems like this is pretty much, you're, we're already done and we're just introducing ourselves to you," which I think defeats the purpose of having an open and clear dialogue. All right, thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Randall. Ms. English?
Mike, can, is there any way you can get a traffic count of that, how much traffic comes in there on a day of Holly Corner?
Yeah, we may have that.
I don't need it right now. I mean, just later, if you could just send it to me.
Okay.
All right, that's fine.
All right.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Zaraf. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? I think they have a representative here. Okay.
Good evening. I'm Kristin Johnson with Development Consulting Services. And if I could just have a second, I wanted to touch on a few items that Mike brought up that I could elaborate a few more pieces of information.
Sure.
And we did actually, the last person that I spoke with, the Stafford Lakes HOA, did ask them if they have had anybody come in and ask any questions. And they did have one person come in, and the reason that came in was because they were not aware that there was an interparcel connector. And of course, the HOA took the position that that was their issue, not our issue. There is a sign there. It's been knocked down. It's been buried in grass for, I don't know how long. So that, that sign had been knocked down, and so this homeowner felt like they were not aware that that was an interparcel connector for future. We also reached out to the five adjoining parcels on Holly Corner Road and sent them, hand-delivered a notice. One person has their property barricaded and no box to leave a notice in, so we did not reach them, but we did to the other four adjoining parcels. We did have one lady give us a call, and her concern was two questions. Was there any construction on, she's across Holly Corner Road from the proposed Holly Corner Manor. Was there any construction on her side of the road? To which we answered, there was not. And her other question was her concern about her goose because she has a goose on her property, and she wanted to make sure there was no construction on her side of the road. So we did address those with her. We did also talk with a gentleman at the Transportation Board and about Holly Corner Road itself, and we got the same information that Mike had gotten. And the one other piece of information that they gave us was that they have no reported accidents on Holly Corner Road, school bus accidents as well. And the other item that I wanted to say was that we're happy to, with this deferral, we have the time, we're happy to take on measuring Holly Corner Road at intervals and documenting those widths. I can do that with Mike. I can do that on my own, however you want that to be done. We are happy to make sure that the proffered road improvements at the intersection of Warton Road and at our entrance are done before any occupancy, that they're done with the site plan work. Also, in reference to the opinion of the content of the Stafford Lakes letter that we delivered to everybody, we did deliver the proper, if you will, pre-written notices that the county requires to the joining parcel owners. So the rezoning notice did go to the Stafford Lakes HOA, and however, they discern that information out to the residents. And this was a notice beyond that, at your last request, to try and give people additional That was the intent of that letter. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Ms. Randall, will she answer your question?
I, no, I didn't, yes, to the level of making an attempt to talk to all the people there. I guess I'm just hesitant with the content of the letter. You know, instead of, hey, we're, this is what we're proposing, this is what we want to do, we're looking at doing this, we're in the develop, we're in the approval process, we are asking for your feedback, we'd love to get your feedback, you know, we're going to have a community gathering, you know, those types of things. I got the impression when I read it and when I sent it out to some people to look at themselves, they got the impression that, you know, we're already here, we're going to be your new neighbors, we're going to be side by side with you, and so welcome us to the community type stuff. And it came to me, it came across to me as a little, a cart before the horse type thing.
I understand.
Okay.
Part of our reaction, just so I can give you a little bit more background, is the Stafford Lake HOA, as much as we tried to get there and say, let us meet with your residents, let us just, okay, you don't want to have a meeting, we'll just, we'll come and just tell them we're going to sit at your clubhouse for four hours one evening or a couple evenings, whatever, can you extend your office hours, and we'll make ourselves available to them. They politely said, no, thank you. We don't want notices, we don't want, no, we're not going to hand out anything, you've met your obligation, and we, you're coming, if you come, you come. We know it's a rezoning, and so I do get your point.
No, and I understand, and some HOAs are more involved in those processes than others. And we had one prior to us, that came to us before us in the spring, and this separate community was very engaged, very much involved with the process. Their HOA was very much a part of that decision or a part of that input. So I know you get them both ways, and so I appreciate your responses. Thank you.
I guess I'm going to follow up on that. Some HOAs are run by the people who actually own houses, and some HOAs are run by...
Yes.
At certain points in time, especially at the beginning of the development process, by the developer themselves. And who's, who's, who's part of the HOA? Who's controlling the HOA at this point in time?
I guess I can't exactly answer that, but I do know that the original person that I was to contact was an agency that was located in Richmond, and then they brought me back to a physical person in Stafford Lakes. I know the board is Stafford Lakes residence, and I'm assuming the HOA reports to that person.
Steve, they're, I think they are run by the residents, but it's managed by a management company. So it's, most of the residents, it is a...
No, I understand. I mean, I served on an HOA, and at the beginning of the process...
Right.
We were, I don't want to call us silent partners, but the developer had the majority of votes on our HOA.
Absolutely.
So I just, I thought I'd at least bring it out there for the sake of transparency. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So for those in the audience, the public hearing was left open, so I'll invite anyone who's interested to come up now and speak if they'd like to. This is an opportunity to address any issues or concerns, positive or negative, that you have about the proposed project. When you come up, please state your name and address. You have up to three minutes to speak. Apparently, the lights aren't working, so I think the process tonight is if, and when you hear the bell, if you could wrap up your comments. So if anyone would like to come up, please come forward.
My name's Bill Bottleson. I live at 55 Peach Lawn Road, which is a corner of Holly Corner and Seventeen. There is a large amount of traffic on Holly Corner Road already. And my personal opinion, it should be a stoplight at the corner of Seventeen and Holly Corner. Probably five, six years ago, the Postal Service had everybody move their mailbox from the north side of Holly Corner to the south side of Holly Corner because the rumor was they were going to widen Holly Corner from Seventeen to Country Manor. Well, we know that didn't happen. And in the mornings, anywhere from four o'clock, four-thirty, it's cars lined up two, three, four, seven, eight deep, trying to make a left turn onto Seventeen. And with these hundred-and-twenty soul houses, average, what, two cars per house, it's going to be a whole lot more traffic backed up trying to get across Seventeen. As you know yourself, it's hard to get across Seventeen from CVS, and it's just as hard to get across Seventeen at Holly Corner Road. Matter of fact, the light would help me get out on Seventeen also. But I think, excuse me, I think somewhere along the line, either VDOT, the developer, somebody should put a stoplight up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else, I'm still going to keep the public hearing open, bring it back to the commission. Mr. English, this is in your district. How would you like to proceed?
Yes, sir. Mr. Appicella, I'd like to go ahead and leave the public hearing open and to the next meeting, November the fourteenth, please.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to leave the public hearing open until the fourteenth, well, to defer and to leave the public hearing open until the fourteenth. Any further comments, Mr. English?
No, sir.
Mr. McPherson?
No.
Anyone else? Okay, please cast your vote. Motion carries five to one, one abstaining. Madam Chairman, I'm going to pass the gavel back to you.
Thank you, Commissioner Appicella. Now, moving on to item number two, amendments to the comprehensive plan for shoreline and stream bank erosion. For this, we recognize Ms. Kathy Baker.
Good evening. If I may have the computer. Very good. This item is a comprehensive plan amendment regarding shoreline and stream bank erosion. This is an amendment that would modify Chapter Two of the Comprehensive Plan, the Foundation for the Future, to incorporate background information on our shoreline areas. It would also create a new objective as well as policies regarding prevention and reduction of shoreline and stream bank erosion. Earlier this year, Virginia Department of Environmental Quality conducted a five-year compliance review of our Chesapeake Bay program, and they are requiring additional language in the comprehensive plan that references how the county addresses stream bank erosion problems. I will note, just for your information, the existing comp plan components that we have regarding shoreline in Chesapeake Bay do address the erosion problems or concerns, but these plans are somewhat dated. We are looking, as part of our comprehensive plan recommendations at our latest update, to actually compile all of our environmental plans into one master environmental plan. That's going to be an ongoing process over the next few years, but it is in the works, and this, this amendment will lead towards some of those changes. With regard to the proposed policies that we are recommending, we would look to update our GIS maps to show the shoreline and stream bank conditions and areas of concern. We would also promote the use of Department of Conservation and Recreation's Shoreline Erosion Advisory Service. We refer that to SEES. And this would provide technical assistance to the county for shoreline erosion problems. We would also promote utilizing the Virginia Institute of Marine Sciences Coastal Resource Management Portal to monitor and manage our shoreline erosion problems. This is a portal that is open to many of the localities that can use this, go in, look at, look at areas and have different, it's an interactive process to, to help look at certain problem areas. And then the policies would also encourage future development projects to mitigate any erosion problems. Just a little bit of background, our shoreline does include both tidal and non-tidal areas. Historically, we've had low shoreline erosion rates from a county-wide perspective. There are areas of concern which include some portions of the Potomac River shoreline and some of the lower reaches of Acquahia and Potomac Creeks. And obviously, stream bank erosion has increased in areas where there's been more development. In your staff reports, you did see the VIMs shoreline report that was done in 2015. Many of the localities throughout Virginia have had reports completed. It has certain recommendations that are specific to Stafford County, but in general, I think it was a common theme through all of these reports that noted traditional practices of shoreline management, such as your bulkheads and your hard structures are not always the best solution. They can have issues in themselves. So there's some suggestions for living shorelines as alternative practice, and this is more of using your plants and stone breakwaters and such, where you're going to have more of a natural shoreline, but have help with some structures that are going to break shoreline activity, wave activity. And the report also does talk about a combination of both of these practices in some areas. It's going to be specific to what the different causes are in a certain shoreline area. And this is just a sample recommendation that came out of the VIMs report for a specific area along the Potomac River, just showing a conceptual design for how this shoreline could be stabilized or preventing future erosion. So staff's recommending approval of the amendments. This does provide a framework for future recommendations in our comp plan. The time limit for the Planning Commission to make a recommendation is November 11th. We did have a request from DEQ to have our action completed by October 31st, but we report to them that we are in process, and we do have to go through the, the actual procedural steps. So I'll note that the Planning Commission can modify any of the language as they see fit within the advertising regulations. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions over here?
Madam Chairman, can you go put the slide deck back up for a second?
Which one?
That one, actually, where it shows the breakwaters. Who would be responsible for putting those in?
It would depend. If there is a development that would come in for that particular property, it may be something that we would work with an applicant to, to create those breakwaters, but it could be, if there are enough problems in that area, that the county would make a recommendation that certain practices be implemented, then that's something the county would have to address at that time.
So taxpayers?
Oh, yes.
Because, I mean, presumably, people who own property, their property line ends where the water begins, right? So who owns the water? I'm just throwing out, who does? Is it the county?
Right. And you have different, different areas of jurisdiction.
Yeah, I know, it depends on where it is. So it's either Stafford County or Maryland, I guess, right?
But there, you know, if you look, say, where Wide Water State Park is now, I know the state is putting in some of these, some of this type of living shoreline, if anyone wants to use that as an example, but that's something that the state is actually doing because that's part of their shoreline.
Back on what he's saying, when Acquahia Landing, when they did that, I think they did some stuff down there. Who paid for that? Was it the county? Because I know they put those, they put the rocks in to the point, and I think they put breakers out to the right side of it, so did we pay for that? Remember that, Jeff? That's been years ago.
Commissioner English and Ms. Baker, I do not recall who installed it. I know it's a necessary feature for our park. Not sure if it was done under grant funds or...
Right.
It was county funds.
Right, okay.
You know, I guess the reason I bring it up is if it's, if it's, if it's needed because of a development, and I don't know if it says this in the document, I did read through it, but I can't remember every word, should, should we suggest that the developer who potentially causes the problem or causes this need, consider offering a proffer?
Well, it's not necessarily something that a developer's, it's going to be caused by them. They may have a property that comes with the issue that's already there. You can't necessarily control ongoing, you know, boats from going by your property and causing more shoreline erosion. There's certain things that...
Wouldn't the disturbance that they cause on the parcel potentially further erode the situation as it exists?
Not necessarily. It depends on, you have varying shorelines out there. Some of them are a couple feet high, some of them are ten to twenty feet high, so it's not necessarily going to be the development on the land that's going to impact the shoreline there. It could be, but it's going to be, again, something case by case, which is where VIMs and DCR come into play to offer suggestions and, and help localities work through these issues to make that determination.
Right, so I don't have specific words to add. I'm just saying that, to the extent that a developer does have an impact based on what they're doing, that changes the landscape, that they ought to consider, the county ought to, I don't know the right words to mention here, but to put us into a problem, but I think it shouldn't be on the taxpayer's dime to fix a problem that somebody else causes.
And it may not.
If it is something that's shared by the community, I understand it, but if it's something that's caused by somebody else's actions on a piece of land, then, you know, I think it shouldn't be something that should be on the taxpayer's dime, just my philosophical thought.
We would certainly evaluate that at such a time.
If I could, I think...
If I could, I think King George County is going through a serious situation. I believe it's called Phone's Cliffs, where a developer came in, did not do the preliminary development work properly, caused significant erosion on the cliffs, and now they're being sued. I would mention that if the water is tidal, then it's considered waters of the United States, and the Corps of Engineers can get involved in serious problems, and you can get federal funding for those remedial measures. And the Corps used to be all concrete and steel to solve erosion problems, but they've become much more environmentally sensitive. So it is an option if, and a lot of the Rappahannock, even in Stafford County, is tidal, so if there are problems in that area, certainly in the Potomac and Potomac Creek, that would be one possible source of funding.
Kathy, I have a quick procedural question. I noticed that the time limit on this is November 11th, yet on one of the pages it says a component of the DEQ compliance must be met by October 31st, 2018. So what's the difference between those two dates, please?
Our county deadline is the November 1st. The DEQ requested that it be completed. When they did our entire compliance review, I think back in August is when we officially got the review, that was the deadline they put in motion, but we had a similar case where we didn't actually have it, have a component in place at that time. We let them know that it's in the process, here's where we are, we've had the public hearing, we're working towards getting this, you know, ultimately to the Board of Supervisors, so...
So next week.
But it's, I mean, it's not going to get to the board, obviously, before the October 31st deadline either, so we're requesting that the planning commission take action because we don't have a meeting before...
Nope.
The October, or, excuse me, before the November 11th deadline.
Any questions on this side?
I do have a quick question. I'm looking at the proposed language. Do you have that in front of you? It would be under the shoreline and stream bank erosion. I think it's the... The fourth paragraph talks about erosion in non-tidal streams, the stream bank erosion. Do you see where I'm at?
Uh huh.
All right. We talk in that paragraph about how stream bank erosion happens, and we understand that development pressures, impervious services increase, those types of things. And then in the next paragraph, you talk about proper monitoring and mitigation of erosion along stream banks. Who is that meant for? Is that meant for the resident to do the proper monitoring and mitigation of erosion along stream banks? Should they tell anybody? Is there any process they can go through? Is that monitoring mitigation listed somewhere else that talks about, here are some possible things that can be done? Or who would be monitoring?
And that's part of the, when I talked about both VIMs and DCR, they, the, this was, this is going to enable us to use their system to assist with monitoring the shoreline changes that may happen, you know, over years. So it's actually going to be kind of a joint effort, but this puts in place some processes for us to use by using these other agencies to work on our...
Is that the same for stream banks as well? I understand the shorelines, and I understand the, but is that the same for the stream banks that we're talking about?
Yes, I mean, the online information addresses all of them.
Does both of those things? Okay.
And that's part of us updating our GIS maps to show what's there now, and then as we continue to monitor it with any changes using those other agencies' information.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, Mr. Randall, or Mr. Bane?
Just a quick one. Is there a state agency that we could call and ask them to come out and evaluate an erosion problem? Or is that, if a resident or landowner complains, is that at the county level only? Or do you know if there's a state agency that we could go to? Is it environmental quality?
Well, there is, but that, part of the SEES Advisory Service, they do actually do site investigations as well, so...
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you so much. So now we'll open it up to the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting, so if you'd like to come down to the podium and talk for three minutes until you hear the bell ring. Would anyone like to come down? Okay, seeing no one rushed the podium, I'll close out the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. Any additional questions for staff that you thought of? Nope, all right. Do we have any action, then? Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the amendment.
Second?
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner English to approve the amendment to the comprehensive plan for shoreline and stream bank erosion, and a second by Commissioner Bane. Any further discussion, Commissioner English?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Bane?
No.
Anyone else? Okay, please cast your vote. Motion carries seven zero. I wish they were all that easy. Okay, Mr. Randall?
Whereas the commission desires to hold a closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members regarding cluster subdivision provisions and the transfer of development rights program, which are specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel, and whereas pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A subsection eight, such discussions may occur in a closed meeting. Now therefore be it resolved that the Stafford County Planning Commission on this, the 24th day of October 2018, does hereby authorize discussion of the above matter in closed meeting.
Okay. We take a vote to go into closed meeting? We need a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Randall?
Yep.
Second by Commissioner Bane. Any discussion?
No.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote. You're going to stay out here, Mr. Appicella? All right, we'll be back shortly, folks.
Freedom of Information Act, and whereas the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, as it became effective July 1st, 1989, provides for certification that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Stafford County Planning Commission does hereby certify on this, the 24th day of October 2018, that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were discussed in a closed meeting to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the said closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the commission.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Randall. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Commissioner English. Any comments?
No.
Okay, let's vote. Okay, motion carries seven zero. Thank you so much. Okay, moving on now to unfinished business, item number three on the agenda, which is the amendment to the zoning ordinance for transfer of development rights, and for this we recognize Ms. Kathy Baker.
This is an ordinance amendment regarding transfer of development rights, or TDR. We have two separate amendments that are part of this item. The first is with regard to Section 28, 359, the calculation of development rights, to clarify that eligible lots are entitled to transfer at least one development right. The second piece of this is Section 28, 364, regarding development approval procedures. And this is basically to change the timing for landing transferred development rights from the preliminary plan to the final plat phase. The planning commission discussed this item on September 26th and raised some concerns with implications of the ordinance amendment with regard to the guarantee of one development right for each lot in Crow's Nest Harbor. So just to summarize a bit, these are the TDR sending and receiving areas. As you see to the right, the sending area is highlighted in blue, and the receiving areas to the left bounded in the red line. These were the sending area parcels that were shown back during the development of the TDR program. The ones that are eligible, as you see in the crosshatched, should state in this, it was estimated that 1,490 development rights could be transferred out of the sending area. And this shows the receiving area parcels. They are parcel-specific as far as what is eligible to receive development rights. The gray properties that you see do not have the appropriate zoning for that. So we have A1, R1, B3, and UD that are eligible. And within the receiving area, there was estimated, with the expansion that occurred back in 2017, up to 3,081 development rights could be accommodated within the receiving There was a question at the meeting about the applications that have occurred in Crow's Nest Harbor. I'll note that we have approved TDR applications, 13 TDR applications. Out of those, four were not part of Crow's Nest Harbor, and I have put, there's a purple or blue star that you see on the parcels that are not considered part of Crow's Nest Harbor. So with all of the applications in total, there were 297 parcels at about 1,048 acres with a total of 501 development rights that have now been determined and issued for those applications. The specific Crow's Nest Harbor applications included 292 parcels, 681 total acres, and 339 development rights that have been determined. So note, if you see on the map, within the Crow's Nest Harbor area, 61 of the parcels that you see indicated in white are properties that have not had applications submitted yet. The, there are 61 remaining. Out of those, we've estimated that 10 may not contain at least one acre of usable area based on the steep slopes and hydroric soils that are present on those lots. This shows the, an environmental constraints map that was prepared, again, back when the TDR program was being developed. You'll see the yellow or green hatched areas that were lots potentially that may not be able to meet that one acre of usable area. Again, these were just estimated based on GIS drawings. The commission also asked at the meeting, at the last meeting, how many multiple parcel owners there were in Crow's Nest Harbor. And under the approved applications, 7K Investments had submitted an application with 129 lots that they owned. The JCM East had 131 lots. Heron Harbor LLC had 25 lots, and just an individual owner, Wong, had two lots under ownership. And then the other multiple parcel owners that have not had applications submitted yet, Northern Virginia Conservation Trust owns eight lots, Stafford County owns six of the lots, and then there are two other individual property owners that have two lots each. There was also some questions subsequent to your meeting regarding the TDR application review process, so I'll be brief on this, but we do have four application types. The first application would be your actual determination of development rights. So if somebody wants to know what they have on their property, they submit an application, and then the planning director would issue a determination on that. That's what gives them the, they can go out and start marketing their number of development rights and use that as a basis to work with other owners. The second application, which can be combined with the first application, is severing those development rights. So that's actually having a certificate recorded and documents recorded that basically put covenants or an easement over those severed rights. The third application would be the transfer or sale of development rights because we do have to track ownership, and so that would be part of that process. And then the last one is affixing the development rights to your eligible receiving properties. As far as the determination, there are specific documents that have to be submitted, including your legal documents and your plat of subdivision, and also the map of the hydroric soils and the steep slopes, and these are calculations that are prepared and submitted by an engineer. The director of planning, as I mentioned, would review the applications that's submitted and then issue the signed determination. This just shows you a sample of one of the applications that we had. The total, this, the screenshot is just a portion of that total application, but to give you an idea of what is shown, the red areas are the steep slopes that are on those particular lots that were determined in the calculations. So with this particular application, we had 310 total acreage. There were 28 acres of hydroric soils, 143 acres of steep slope. There's also a portion in the calculation that talks about removing road right-ofways or easements. In this instance, as you see up in the right-hand corner, there was 0.18 acre of right-ofway easement, actually, that went through one of the parcels. So that was also subtracted out. So once you do your calculation, subtracting out those three areas, the slopes, the soils, and the easement, we did account for the overlap where you had soils and the slopes that were in the same area. You don't count that twice, so there's some overlap area that was accounted for, and the total there, 145 development rights. So what you see at the left, the chart, that's just a portion of the chart showing this is how each lot is calculated, and then there's a running total. So wanted to let you know that subsequent to your meeting, we did receive a request from the originator of this ordinance amendment that wanted to separate the two issues, if possible, for public hearing purposes. They understand that one of them may not be as entailed and have as much discussion, so they were requesting that. I would also note that just today, we received a request that we look at some additional language. You all received that, was emailed out to you and I believe handed out, and so that's something else if you all wish to consider before authorizing this for public hearing. So I note here, you should authorize a public hearing for November 14th for your December 19th hearing, and that would to allow you to make your recommendation before the December 21st time limit. And the planning commission can modify the draft language, so I will leave at that and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Any questions from the commission? No questions? Okay. Oh, Mr. Bane?
I think, if you could go back to the slide that showed the number of applications that had been processed.
This one?
One before that, I believe. Whoop, keep going. Oh, no, that was the one.
Yeah, this was.
So the, on that far left, lower-left corner box, the 501 development rights that have been processed, that's over and done with, right?
Correct.
And nothing we decide regarding these ordinance amendments would have any impact on those?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, the 61 parcels that are remaining, and possibly only 51, since they cannot contain a one acre of usable area, those could be, some, looking at your map, some of them could be combined, and under the computational method that you have been using, could possibly get a few more TDRs or development rights by area, but it would only be a couple, I presume. Wouldn't be much of a change there.
Correct. And I believe as the ordinance is written, well, no, they can change ownership, they just had to have been plotted, so yes. When you submit an application, they do have to be under the same ownership in order to...
Oh, they do have to actually own it?
Yes.
I see, okay. Well, that's good clarification. All right, so in terms of Crow's Nest Harbor, the impact of these ordinance changes would be really minimal?
Most likely, yes.
It seems to me. All right, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Madam Chair, I have one quick question. Could you, I think it's the next one or the...
Can you send us these too? So these slides?
It's oversight, it's overlay with all the different slopes and soils.
Oh, that was this one?
I thought we had one that was closer.
That was just that.
That one, right there. So theoretically, if I have a parcel, and this is in Crow's Nest, correct?
This is Crow's Nest Harbor.
Crow's Nest Harbor. So theoretically, if I had, and I look at all of these, and so all of them have either some soil or some slope, some of them much more than others, but theoretically, I would have, I could potentially have a lot that would have no slopes, no soil issues, and I could get two developmental rights for that particular lot. Is that correct?
That's correct. There are some in Crow's Nest.
That have already had that, and they've been able to identify, because it's one acre per, and if they don't have any issues with it, I could get two developmental rights out of it.
That's correct.
Is that correct? Okay. So now what we're asking is that for those few that, I think to Mr. Bain's point, for those few lots that wouldn't have, would have less than an acre, we're really only talking of the 297 in Crow's Nest, you're only talking probably a small handful. Is that correct?
About 10 lots is what we've estimated.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I could have piggyback off that. So kind of looking at the contrary view, I'm going to look at, I'm going to point out 49DA32. To me, that looks like a lot that probably has less than one acre of buildable space. Is that correct?
I'd have to do my calculations.
It's the bottom one. I see a couple more like that. 49D-B-18, 49D-B-2.
Yes.
49D, I can't even tell what the number is. Looks like I got railroad tracks running through it. So I'm seeing at least four lots here that might not make the one acre minimum.
That's correct.
Even so, the folks who submitted an application and were able to get, in this case, 145 development rights, they still had to prove something to the county that they had a certain number of development rights by the current process. It wasn't just guaranteed. They had to go through some process.
That's correct. They had to have an engineer do the calculations and submit that to the county to verify.
And is it a fair statement to say that just because somebody buys a lot in Stafford County, at the end of the day, it may not be buildable once they start investigating what particulars are on that lot?
I would assume there could be some restrictions on a particular lot, but...
Not every, from your experience, not every single lot in Stafford County is buildable. Not every single lot.
Can't really answer that, but I'm sure there are lots out there where people may have not gotten a septic field on a lot that, so they couldn't build on it. There are probably issues that may preclude someone from building on a lot, yes.
And we do have a steep slopes provision in the code, right?
You can build homes on steep slopes. There's no restriction. There are certain engineering and certain erosion control measures.
Right. But if you couldn't meet those measures, you probably wouldn't be able to build on that lot. Is that...
If they cannot meet what's in our current code or building codes.
Commissioner Appicella, the zoning ordinance does have a maximum slope height based on the post-construction condition. So it may be this one has to put in retaining walls so they don't violate that or do other structural measures. So some of the constraints that you see with lot development may be a function of engineering and cost. And as we've seen over time, some lots in the county that didn't qualify for septic systems, over time, now do because of change in technology and also change in lot prices. As house prices go up, lot prices go up, the relative cost of develop may make some properties more feasible where they hadn't been in the past. So I think that's part of what Ms. Baker was qualifying in her answer.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions?
Ms. Baker, how hard would it be to break this out as per ownership? To be able to show the 129 lots that are all combined and the number of those acres, using the same map that you just had, but then conglomerated by different owners?
We have those maps in our files for each application.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay. Thank you. Okay, this is not a public hearing, so the commission has the ability to make a motion at this point in time, ask for additional information, and make a motion on the November 14th meeting. Does anybody have anything that they would like to make a motion on currently?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I move, the motion is a couple parts. I move that, first of all, we do separate the two items under consideration. We can consider them in the same meeting, but they can be separately discussed in public hearings and voted on. And I also move that we open a public hearing on a special session on the December 5th to give us time, we have to, we need time to get the advertisements out, and that would give us time to have a public hearing and discuss again, if needed, on the 19th to meet our deadline later in the month of December.
Madam Chairman, I have a substitute motion.
There hasn't been a second. Does anybody want to second that? Okay, so we have a motion to, I'm trying to remember, to bifurcate the items and consider them independently and to move them to public hearing November 14th?
We don't have time, December 5th.
No, oh, December 5th. And have a, we're adding a special meeting to our calendar.
I'm open to other dates.
Do we, can we even do that, Rashida? Can we just make up a date without having it as a planned meeting? Don't we have to take the motion to make the meeting first?
You can do it back there.
Okay. Okay. So that's the motion. I have a second by Commissioner Boswell. Any discussion?
Madam Chairman. Do I not get to offer my substitute?
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I move that we put forward the revised, or proposed revised ordinance as is, without bifurcation, at the next possible public hearing date.
Which would be November 4th, December, December 19th. Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Appicella to keep the items together, advertise them for a public hearing on December 19th. We have a second by Commissioner English. Any discussion, Commissioner Appicella?
Madam Chairman, I appreciate that the requestor asked to have the items bifurcated and that Mr. McPherson made the motion. I don't see the value added in separating the two. We can obviously do that at the meeting on the 19th in terms of how we recommend the board consider the ordinance going forward.
Okay. Commissioner English?
I have nothing.
Anyone else want to discuss?
Quick question. This is due, Rashida, when? We have to make a decision by the end of December?
Yes.
December 21st? So I guess to the point, will we be able, do we think we can take care of it and do everything we need to do in one meeting?
Yeah. It's pretty cut and dry. I mean, I think so.
Well, no.
Our scope is very limited to those two paragraphs. So I mean, yeah.
I guess, yes. Okay. No, no, I'm good then. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So we have a second, or a substitute motion on the floor, so we have to vote on that first. So everybody's clear that they're voting for what Stephen said, keep the items together, and move them to public hearing December 19th. Commissioner Randall, or Commissioner English seconded. So everybody, go ahead and vote on the substitute first. Okay, motion carries six to one with Mr. Boswell voting no. So that removes the first, so we are good to move on. Okay. Item number four on the agenda, the amendment to the zoning ordinance. For this, we recognize Mr. Brian Gooch.
Am I able to speak to the proffer amendment item first?
We didn't amend the agenda, or the, yeah, we didn't amend the agenda. Can we do that at this time, Rashida?
I believe the proffer amendment is actually a part of the zoning text amendment, so I think whichever order staff chooses to present it in would be fine.
Okay, perfect. Go ahead, Mr. Gooch.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. Brian Gooch here with Planning and Zoning Department. First tonight, I'll be covering a summary of a project that is yet to be scheduled for a public hearing. This is a proffer amendment request for the villages at Green Bank. And the purpose of this is to provide some context for the zoning ordinance amendment request. So the proffer amendment request is to amend proffers in the RBC recreational business campus zoning district for an 1,177-unit retirement housing development. This is on tax map parcel numbers 44WH and 521. The total site area is 441.67 acres. The applicant and agent is Chris Hornung. The owner is Silver Celebrate Virginia Golf LLC. The proposed proffer amendment, as I said, is related to an ordinance amendment requested by the applicant. The applicant has requested that the ordinance be amended to allow for a greater percentage of retirement housing in the RBC district. The proffer amendment is offered in support of the ordinance amendment request. Here's a location and zoning map. The property is located at the southern terminus of Celebrate Virginia Parkway, outlined in red. A portion of the northern boundary follows Celebrate Virginia Parkway as well as Scottsford Lane, which I will highlight here. The property is a southern portion of 1,200-acre tract zoned RBC recreational business campus that's shown in purple. The property was included in the original 1,170-acre RBC rezoning initiated by the Board of Supervisors and approved in 1999. There are currently no proffers on this portion of the RBC district. Property is currently developed with one 18-hole golf course, a clubhouse here, and associated parking area. The golf course generally occupies the eastern half of the property. Directly to the west of the golf course, there's a cleared area, which is currently being used for soybean production. And to the west of that, there's wooded area, which features a lot of steep slopes. And a large portion of this wooded area along the western property line is covered by existing conservation easements. To the east of the property, there's an additional parcel owned by the developer, which is also mostly covered with conservation easements. And surrounding the property to the south and east are additional conservation easements, which are held by the city of Fredericksburg. Adjacent to the property, there's also the Lake Mooney reservoir up at the northwestern end of the property. The property boundary is shown in red in this image, and existing conservation easements are hashed or shaded. There are some wetlands and RPA on the property associated with streams at the western end and eastern end. There are also two small ponds. The image also shows the location of historic sites on the property. The sites include 19th-century farmsteads, Civil War huts and gun emplacements, and as well as prehistoric camps. The sites were studied in Phase 1 and 2 archaeological surveys performed on the property. No further study, no further study was recommended for the sites shown in red on the map here. The sites in green were found to be potentially significant and are currently preserved in conservation easements or plan to be preserved and proposed parkland on the property. The sites in blue require additional study to determine if they're eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. Treatment requirements for these sites are detailed in a memorandum of agreement between the Celebrate Virginia CDA, US Army Corps of Engineers, and the Department of Historic Resources. The MOA includes a requirement to create a restricted build zone, and that's depicted by this dashed line at the south end of the property. And the MOA requires that no structures exceeding 1,000 square feet can be built in that area, and structures that are built have to be screened. Here's a overall look at existing development in the RBC district. The district is shown with a black boundary. Existing development includes the four-lane access road, which serves the development, Celebrate Virginia Parkway. This is a four-lane divided road. The Battle Round Estates neighborhood, which is 50 executive housing lots. The Del Webb Age-Restricted Community, which is around 1,100, single-family detached and townhouse units, as well as duplex units. And that's shown here, and about 700 of those are complete. Also, the Silver Collection Apartments at the north end, which is, consists of 278 non-age-restricted units, and one 11,000-square-foot commercial building. As I said, other adjacent uses include Lake Mooney Park and Reservoir, as well as some single-family residences along Green Bank Road and Sanford Drive. And here's a aerial image of the southern terminus of Celebrate Virginia Parkway, looking at the property, the northern end of the property with the existing clubhouse and parking area and golf course. The comprehensive plan designates this property within the suburban land use designation with a maximum recommended residential density of three units per acre. The RBC district requires the submittal of a preliminary concept plan, which establishes land use pods where different types of developments are permitted. This image shows the current concept plan and the plan proposed by the applicant on the right. The applicant proposes to expand the retirement district, which is shown in purple, and the area that's currently occupied with the resort district, which is shown in green. And this is to allow for the additional 1,177 retirement units. Conservation District land use pod has also been added as a new category that's shown in the light blue. This district coincides with the location of conservation easements and the restricted build zone that I mentioned earlier. The ordinance allows the applicant to establish land use pod names and allowed uses within each pod, but also requires that changes to the concept plan be acted on by the Planning Commission if certain criteria are met. And one other difference you'll note on these images is the current one shows this area in purple up here. This is the area of a recently submitted project referred to Celebrate Now, which proposes, I believe, 44 additional retirement housing units. The concept plan submitted by the applicant has not been updated to reflect that change.
Can you go back one? Sorry.
Yes.
So despite the name change, the areas that are designated as Conservation District on the proposed are essentially the same as what currently exists. Nothing's changing there. They're not adding any more conservation area, per se?
No, it's just categorized differently. That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
This image depicts the conceptual layout of the proposed 1,177-unit development. Features include a primary access extending from the current terminus of Celebrate Virginia Parkway. I believe the current cul-de-sac is around here, so they're going to extend it down to a roundabout, which will lead southwest to another roundabout. And these two roundabouts will divide traffic into generally three development areas. There's, what they're referring to is Village A, B, and C. I'll just mark those on the plan here. One additional access point is... One additional access point is proposed on Scottsford Lane. And a mixture of unit types are proposed, with what's shown here includes 235 detached units, 588 duplex, and 354 townhomes. Several recreation amenities are proposed, including the clubhouse parcel up at the main entrance. There's also three small parks, one located within each village. And a, I'm sorry, that other one was here.
Brian, real quick.
Yes, ma'am.
And these are all age-restricted, correct?
That's correct.
And so what would happen if they wanted to take the age restriction off?
They would not be able to do that without an ordinance change, because the ordinance doesn't allow for non-age-restricted units. The only age-restricted units or non-age-restricted units that are allowed are executive housing lots, which are limited to 50, with one additional per every 10,000-square-foot of commercial development. So they wouldn't be able to go that route. And the only other residential uses allowed are multifamily, but that requires a conditional use permit.
Okay, thanks.
If I could piggyback on that, if I may. Speaking of age-restricted requirements, are there preset ages to which age restriction applies? Or could we have an ordinance, it's age-restricted, and then they could advertise that, all right, anybody with a child under eight years old can't live here, but anything older than that would apply? What are the parameters for age restriction?
So the definition for retirement housing refers to state code regulations, which requires that age-restricted housing be for 55-plus.
Oh, so retirement living and age restrictions are different words for the same thing?
Right. I'm sorry, I meant that our code actually refers to it as retirement housing.
Okay, so age-restricted does de facto mean retirement housing?
Those are used interchangeably, yes.
Okay, thank you.
But could a kid live with his grandparents?
I believe the state code allows for some temporary housing of younger folks, but I'm not sure how that's regulated or enforced. I'd have to look into that more. Yes.
Madam Chair? Brian, the Del Webb community currently is under that ordinance, correct?
That's correct.
Because it's as well age-restricted housing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. So we should have something in place, and there should be a way to say, if you're going to have somebody living with you, you need to go through this process in order to get it approved, no longer than 30 days. Those types of things should be in the ordinance already?
I believe they would be, yes. I'm not positive on that.
I'm more interested in the enforcement and understanding, like if a kid goes there, how they register him for school, and then how do we know? For school capacity numbers, essentially.
Yeah, I'd have to get back to you on that unless Mr. Harvey you happen to know.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, the county does not directly regulate that requirement. That's a state and federal requirement. A lot of times, it ends up going back to being able to get mortgages for your property. If you want to buy a house, the community has to be in compliance to be able to keep that age restriction.
Restrictive covenant, is what you're saying?
They are handled through restrictive covenants, as well as the federal regulations, because this is exempt from some of the Fair Housing Act standards, but they have to meet the requirements in order to do so.
So to follow on, thank you very much. So to follow on, the Del Webb, you said there were 700 already built of the?
Approximately, yes.
1,200 that were planned?
1,100, yes.
1,100 that were planned? Do we know? Could you please find out from the school whether or not they actually go in there with a school bus to pick up kids for schools?
I will. I'll verify that. I know the applicant has stated that they requested that information from schools, and they indicated there were none from that existing community, but I will verify that.
Okay, okay.
What about on the, when you come in on Celebrate, where the clubhouse is on the left, as you're going in? On the right, I thought that was, is that multifamily on the right?
That's, I believe the majority of that is townhomes, but that's also part of the Del Webb. Are you talking about the apartment complex?
No. When you go in, when you celebrate, if you're familiar with it, when you go in and you celebrate where the waterfall is on the left, but on the right side of that, there's multifamilies in there, I think. I don't think that it's age-restricted on that right side.
You're talking about here in green on the image?
Yes, yes, exactly. I don't think that's age-restricted in there.
It is.
It is?
It's part of the Del Webb community. It's age-restricted.
Okay, all right.
Let's see here. A Civil War interpretive park is also proposed on the east side of the property. It's shown here in blue. And a 66-acre park is proposed to be located at the south end of the development. And this would be a passive recreational park. The developer is also proposing shared-use paths, eight foot in width throughout the development. These paths would connect to the existing eight-foot path along Celebrate Virginia Parkway. It'd also connect to the planned park sites.
Brian, Mr. Bain has a question.
I'm sorry, I was going to let him finish, but the 66-acre park, is that going to be restricted to residents of the age-restricted community, or is that open to anybody?
As it stands now, it would be most likely a private park. The developer, the applicant, was interested in seeing if the county would want to take ownership of that park. They would do the improvements and then turn it over to the county to be a public park. But in talking with Parks and Recreation, I don't believe they'd have the resources to take on something like that, so they're not interested in taking that on as a public facility at this time.
Thank you.
As I said, there are shared-use paths, in addition to the sidewalks, proposed along the primary internal roads, and also connecting to the small pocket park sites. And they're also proposing to extend that along Scottsford Lane, which would facilitate bike and pedestrian access over to Lake Mooney. They have provided a park concept plan shown here. Proposed facilities at the 66-acre park at the south end of the development include a parking lot with a small building with restrooms, open field for special events, a trail system, which would utilize a lot of the existing paved golf cart paths, community gardens, and areas for historical interpretation and wildlife observation.
Brian, if I may, real quick, would the farm wineries and agritourism business be allowed in that area if they so desired, assuming that the ordinance changed?
That's the intent, for that to be provided on at least a portion of that 66-acre area at the south end.
Okay, so it's not in their concept plan, but it could go there?
That's right, if it's approved and added to the ordinance.
And just remember, guys, this is just, he's just running through, this is not the actual application and presentation, so we need to keep whatever we're asking kind of related to the ordinance, even though I know they're intertwined.
Just real quickly, a couple points on transportation and public facility impacts. TIA, Transportation Impact Analysis, has been submitted for this application. It estimates that the development would generate 4,700 vehicles per day, 282 in the AM peak hour, 388 in the PM peak hour. One thing I'll note is a current connection from Scottsford Lane to Green Bank Road and Sanford Drive is proposed to be closed and utilized for emergency access only. So public access to the development would be only via Celebrate Virginia Parkway. Also, safety improvements to Celebrate Virginia Parkway and Banksford Parkway are being considered. That intersection, there's been some concerns about safety there, so there's some consideration to improvements there, which could include a signalization or a roundabout. For public facilities, a draft proffer statement has been submitted and included in the packet. And one note is that the project will be reviewed under the old proffer guidelines, since this is a proffer amendment. And additional analysis is to be provided with the public hearing staff report. And finally, a public hearing for the proffer amendment will be scheduled concurrently with the proposed ordinance amendment, since these issues are intertwined. And that is, of course, once the planning commission initiates the public hearing for the ordinance amendment. And I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gooch. Any questions on my right? Go ahead, Mr. Bain.
I wasn't on the commission when this was originally developed, but it's my, in reading the history, it seems that the entire Celebrate Virginia area was a special ordinance change, and that they basically sold it as a mixed-use with a significant public park component to be the golf course, and that the county was very much in agreement with that, that they thought the golf course would be a significant benefit. There have been several changes to the zoning in this development over the years. Every one of them has gone to a higher-density development configuration, indicating to me that the silver companies are basically working their way to maximize their profits based on zoning changes. And now, we have this one that is, to me, monumental. Not only are they getting a tremendous density improvement, but the county is losing a significant recreational benefit. And I know in the documents provided, they were saying, well, the golf course has failed. I'm suspicious in nature at that. It could have failed primarily due to poor management. I played that golf course, and I know how poorly it was managed. So it could have something to do with that. I just feel that to convert all of that open land to a high-density residential situation is really counterproductive for the county, and that's just my opinion. So thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chairman?
Mr. Appicella?
Just to kind of springboard off of Mr. Bain's comment, presumably, when the applicant came forward with the golf course, they did some kind of economic analysis and said what that would bring into the county. So, once this comes forward, I'd like to know what they pitched as that economic impact of the golf course and what we're losing by not having the golf course or an alternative recreational amenity.
And I think that golf course has done changed hands twice, I think, hasn't it? Mr. Gooch?
It did change management, I believe, for a couple of years, and it?
Management, but not ownership.
Okay.
I believe so, yes. And I believe it closed for the second time at the end of last year.
Any other questions on this, and then we'll get to the ordinance? Yeah? Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
So just for those following along at home, now we're going to go to item number four on the agenda, which is the Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance, 018-31, for the RBC district.
Okay. Next item, Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance relating to the RBC recreational business campus zoning district. The proposal is to amend Chapter 28 of the zoning ordinance to redefine the RBC district to the PD III or Plan Development III zoning district, and modify district requirements and amend other ordinance provisions. The proposed amendments are related to what I just covered, the proposed 1,177-unit retirement housing development. To summarize, there are sort of two categories here. First is the amendments requested by the applicant. The applicant has requested an increase in the allowed percentage of retirement housing from currently 30% to 45%. And recently, they've also requested to include farm wineries and agritourism as permitted uses in the district. And secondly, there's amendments suggested by staff to accompany the applicant's request, since we see this request as a significant change in character of the development. Therefore, we thought it would be prudent to take a look at the recreational business campus district and what it was intended to be, and modify that as necessary to accompany this request. And those suggestions include a redefining of the RBC district to the Plan Development III district, and include the regulations that were formally for the RBC district and with the other PD regulations. Also, we think it's necessary to clarify how open space is calculated, and revise, we're proposing to revise the ordinance to require 35% district open space, which is, we're defining that as common areas, so it could be areas for recreation, conservation, or HOA maintained common area. We're also proposing to increase the allowed percentage of retirement housing to 47%, because we find that 47% would actually be needed to accommodate all existing and proposed developments. We're also proposing to remove uses which are incompatible with residential uses, and remove uses listed unnecessarily, and remove regulations which would no longer apply. And just to overview the major changes that are being proposed, we're proposing to remove several uses, as I said, which are listed unnecessarily or are incompatible, and remove related performance standards. Proposing to remove performance standards, which are already covered by other sections of the code and are unnecessary. Again, we're proposing to change the retirement housing from 30% to 47%, clarify open space requirements. And finally, we're proposing to change the ordinance, so that any change to the preliminary concept plan will need to be acted on by the planning commission, whereas currently only changes that meet certain criteria are required to go to the planning commission. Finally, staff is recommending authorizing a public hearing for December 19th. The board did approve an extended time limit for the planning commission, which extended the deadline to March 17th. And finally, just to note, the planning commission can modify the draft ordinance as they see necessary. And I'll take any questions.
Any questions on the ordinance portion for tonight? Mr. Appicella?
I'm confused by that last slide. So are you still recommending that we move forward with a public hearing to be held on December 19th?
I am, yes.
And we still, we don't know when we're going to get the proffer amendment?
The proffer amendment has been submitted. It's been sort of on hold until the ordinance amendment caught up. So now that staff has drafted everything and gotten the ordinance amendment together, we feel that these two items are ready to be scheduled for a public hearing for consideration concurrently.
So the applicant's not going to make any changes to their proffer amendment? That's what you're?
Not yet. We are getting some last comments to them, so there could still be additional changes, but we'll see.
Okay, and so what's your sense of how long that give and take might be before you get a finalized version that's fully baked and ready for us to look at?
I believe we'll have everything ready by, in time for a December 19th public hearing.
But don't we have to advertise the proffers in the newspaper?
Yes, we do.
So you'd think we'd have those before, then?
I do.
Okay.
Again, I'm just trying to work through the timeline. We have one meeting in November, and then we have one meeting in December. So in order, if we don't act on it tonight, then we would need to, in my view, see a final, the proffer amendment next month in order to meet the public hearing requirements, and to make sure that the two, from our vantage point, two pieces are aligned.
But we don't get the proffer amendment until they, that's part of the public hearing, isn't it? This is what we were talking about Monday. So because this is an actual applicant? So, because this is an actual applicant application, and the ordinance is sort of county-driven...
Oh, I appreciate that the county's pushing forward on it.
No, but I'm saying...
Irrespective of that...
The proffer amendment doesn't, like, what he gave us is the most they can give us without having it as a public hearing. Like, the first time we'll see the proffer amendment is during the public hearing, I think. If I interpreted what Rashida gave us on Monday.
Madam Chairman, Commissioner Appicella, the December public hearing date is based on an assumption that the commission's satisfied with the ordinance as of today. Staff doesn't know if the commission's got some substantive changes they want to recommend. If so, then that'll push the public hearing date back.
How can I be satisfied without knowing what the final version of the proffer amendment looks like? If the two, this, this ordinance change is crafted specifically for this project, as far as I'm concerned. I don't see how you can look at them separately. So, I need to see both pieces side by side, in my view. I don't know about the rest of my colleagues here. I can't, I can't say this thing is ready to go for a public hearing, the ordinance change, without seeing the proffer amendment, because it could change enough to be outside of what the ordinance is proposing.
So, is there a way that we could potentially have the proffer, like, go ahead and schedule, we probably, it's probably too late to schedule a proffer amendment for the November fourteenth meeting, huh?
I believe so.
So, at least we could, if you guys submitted that, and we had that public hearing December nineteenth, we could at least review that, and then have the ordinance as unfinished business on that agenda, then move that to public hearing for the January meeting.
Yes, Madam Chairman, there's no requirement that they, the ordinance and the proffer amendment move simultaneously? That was staff's recommendation, so the commission could view it all as an entire entity. The ordinance itself would have to be adopted before the board could approve the zoning change.
Sure.
Yeah.
So, I've been here seven-plus years. I've seen both in front of us at the same time, a rezoning and a ordinance change associated with that rezoning, tied together on the same schedule. I realize that this thing was submitted first. I'm not, I'm not quite sure why, but I still think and feel, without knowing what that proffer, final proffer amendment looks like, it's, I don't see how we could say, hey, December nineteenth is our, is our date, we're going to move it forward then. I just don't see how. This is such a big, I'm going to go back to what Mr. Bain said. This is such a big project, and such a big ordinance change, I just don't see how we can separate the two in terms of timing.
So, what, what would you like us to do?
I'm just, again, I'm reacting to the proposal that we schedule this for a public hearing on December, maybe. I mean, if the proffer amendment's ready to go by next meeting, and it's, you know, we're ready to see it, perhaps, but I just don't, I don't know.
Can we wait and see the proffer before we set a public hearing?
Is it, is it...
Has it been the nineteenth of December?
Is the... Well...
No, it's not. If you heard them both on the nineteenth, the time limit for the proffer amendment would be initiated, which is a hundred days from the first public hearing. That would generally coincide with the revised deadline for the ordinance amendment, which is March seventeenth. So, you'd have the same amount of time to consider both of them.
Yeah. So, that makes sense. So, we see, we see the proffer amendment for December nineteenth, and I think that has to be a scheduled public hearing, right? And then, we would essentially look at the ordinance under unfinished business, decide if we wanted to send that to public hearing. Technically, we could keep the public hearing open for the, for the proffer amendment, and then have them all on the second meeting in January, for example, if that's what the commission desired. And that gives us time, then we can hash it out January, February, and it's not due till March. Does that make you feel more comfortable?
It not only makes me feel more comfortable, I think you've got to look at the public.
Yeah.
They're, you can't talk about bifurcating something. I don't think you can bifurcate these two things and put them on separate tracks. I think they have to be on the same track, and everybody's seeing the same thing at the same time, to be able to make sense of it all.
Okay. So, we know what Stephen wants to do.
I'm with him. I'm exactly with him.
Yeah. No, I think it makes a lot of sense.
There's a motion on the second.
Yeah. But I know Mr. Randall had a question, and we're not done with questions yet, I think, so...
So, yeah, I don't even know where to start. You know, to the point of this is...
Remember, we're going to have the public hearing, so you can go on then.
Yeah, I know. To that point, you know, you mentioned, I don't want to give this away, I'm eligible to be in that retirement community, right? And I know you're not, Roy. I know, you're still young.
For the record...
You don't look like Dave. You're not right. But to the point of, you know, Mr. Bain's point is trying to push as many houses as they can into density, you know, if you're really trying to make this a retirement community for age-restricted housing, you know, the ones that really do it well don't look like anything that you've presented, or they've presented, or have thought about presenting to us. So, I'm at a loss as to think that we would want to extend the forty-seven percent, or get it to forty-seven percent, simply so they can put more houses per lot in a location where they're a four-mile drive just to get out to seventeen. And then, you know, all these different things that they've taken out, all these things, you know, would we have done this without this proposal? Would we have looked at this? Is this, if we looked at these separately, for example, would, what do we do for retirement communities elsewhere in the county? Is this the only place in the county that has a age-restricted housing? Would not this, some of this fall into that location? Or did that fall under another ordinance that doesn't apply in this case?
Well, there are only certain districts that permit retirement housing. I believe the R five is one of them. So, there aren't, as far as current locations they can go, there's, it's limited. So, for the new developments, it would most likely require some sort of rezoning to a different district. I'm not sure if that answers your question.
Well, I'm asking a question and making a statement at the same time. I do appreciate that. So, just so I'm clear, new to this, we would not be able to have anything to do with this on the fourteenth, November fourteenth meeting, is that correct?
We need, we need the proffer, if we do what Stephen's suggesting, we would like to see the proffer amendment. That has to be a public hearing. So, we, so that would be December nineteenth, essentially, is the earliest they could do that, because he said he couldn't make it for the November fourteenth meeting. So, the soonest we could see the proffer amendment on, from the applicant, is December nineteenth.
So, we would send it to public hearing on November fourteenth, for on, for December nineteenth?
We don't have to do that. It automatically goes, because it's applicant. Once, once they technically submit it, and it's ready to go, it goes onto our public hearings' schedule. So, that would be for December nineteenth.
What's the latest they can submit that and still make the nineteenth of December timeline?
Well, Mr. Gooch said most of it's presented. There's a few questions he said he thought it would, would be in sufficient time to be able to advertise. If not, then their project waits till January. And so, essentially, we'll have that meeting, the proffer amendment, on the nineteenth of December. Then, we'll look at this as unfinished business, technically, we could do that, and if we didn't vote to send it to public hearing prior to that, or on the nineteenth. And then, we could essentially defer on the December nineteenth, the proffer amendment, and view them both together, and both public hearings leave them open.
Right.
Potentially. That's one track.
Sure, sure. I guess I would be interested in having this open for as long as possible. I mean, I would be interested in having the ordinance open as well on the nineteenth, and doing them both, the public hearings, and then if we have to present...
But we can't change the ordinance then, so we wouldn't, we want to see the proffer, at least I do. I want to see the proffer amendment before I send the ordinance to public hearing to make changes.
Right. But this goes a little to my question of, were some of these changes, would we make some of these changes to the ordinance regardless of whether they, we have a proffer amendment or not? Does this make sense? Do some of these things make sense to that area?
The ordinance amendment wouldn't be before you, I don't think, without the, the dismissal of the proffer amendment request. So, they, they are tied together, they go hand in hand. I don't think one makes sense without the other.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Bain?
The proffer would not be eligible if the ordinance wasn't changed.
That's correct.
So, it's being done to benefit...
I understand that part of it. The silver company.
Now, I will note, there's only minor changes that would be required, the ordinance to permit the proposed development. However, as I noted before, staff feels like it's prudent to look at the big picture and consider everything altogether.
Okay. Any other questions or comments before we make a motion? Does any, okay, Daryl, this is in your district, so I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, I'm making a motion to, both of them until the nineteenth of December.
Okay. We have a motion to defer this item until December nineteenth as unfinished business. We have a second by Commissioner Boswell. Any further comment?
No, I'm just, like, everybody said, this is like, we need to dive into this a lot more and see what the proffer statements are.
Okay. Mr. Boswell? Okay. Everybody, go ahead and vote. All right. Motion carries seven-zero. Thank you so much, Mr. Gooch.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Just for clarification for staff's purposes, the, the purpose of the deferral on the proffer amendment was for advertising the public hearing for the nineteenth, is that correct?
Wait...
We're not deferring, it hasn't even been scheduled yet. You can't defer what hasn't been scheduled yet, right? We're only deferring the...
The discussion of it. Yeah, we're deferring the discussion. My interpretation was that we were deferring the discussion of the ordinance until December nineteenth, so we don't need to discuss it again on the November fourteenth, that we're deferring it till December nineteenth.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Okay. Good. Everybody clear with that? All right. Planning Director's report, Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. At the last Board of Supervisors meeting, the board sent the Design and Construction Standards Manual for Landscaping back to the planning commission to start the public hearing process. In doing so, the board had two recommendations. The first recommendation was to consider adding wording and provisions for zerescaping. Zerescaping is a method of landscaping for properties to ensure that the plannings provided do not require irrigation. Right now, currently in our Design Standards Manual, there's no requirement for irrigation, but there's other considerations that go into effect with zerescaping. And the board asked that we look at, to see if we need to modify the, the text of the design manual to accommodate that. Also, the board asked the commission to take a look at adding provisions in the ordinance to give people credit for preserving natural wildlife areas on their property, and then also documenting those as such by providing signage. And that may be in lieu of some buffer requirements. So, staff will provide a, a report at the next meeting with the ordinance and some, excuse me, the revised manual and some recommended wording changes that the commission can consider for advertising a public hearing. With regards to downtown Stafford, staff is working with the board and continuing to make progress. We're working with a consultant now to prepare a generalized development plan on how the county's property will, could possibly be developed and be considered for rezoning. I'll provide more detail as it becomes available with regard to that effort. And the bicycle and pedestrian facilities plan, I've had discussions with Mr. Gooch, and he's making progress, but we're not prepared to come back to the planning commission with a document that could potentially be discussed for public hearing. Likely to be December, when we'd be able to possibly bring that back. As such, we're going to need to ask the commission's indulgence to request additional time, again, to the board, for us to deal with this project. Unfortunately, it's taken longer than we'd anticipated, because we're working on a number of different issues in our office that have been taking up a lot of time, that has distracted us away from this project. So, Madam Chairman, if it's, if it's okay with you, staff can prepare a, another request for a time extension on the planned document?
Sure.
Thank you. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you. Ms. McLendon?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I know you all have met our new attorney, but I want to take this chance to officially introduce her. She is out in the audience. She, her name is Lauren Lucian, and she will be the County Attorney's Office Representative to the Planning Commission.
Hi, Lauren.
Please welcome Lauren to Stafford County.
We're happy to have you onboard. All right. Thank you, Ms. McLendon. I know, that's the first time you've had a report. The first time Dan ever had a report, he was quitting. So, please don't do that to us.
There's a pattern.
Committee reports. A-one uses subcommittee, I'm going to make this painless, Jeff. I think that there were three things that we talked about at the last meeting. I don't know if anybody sent any feedback, because I know I forgot to, even with the reminder email. The first one was under the ordinance, or under the A-one uses for cemeteries, we mentioned adding that ordinance number for the cemetery ordinance code there, so that there was no confusion of what the state, or what the county code is for creating a cemetery, just like they had, I think, on the, they added it for farmers' markets and family, group family and daycares. They referenced the ordinance number, so that way it eliminates any misreading of the, the language. I know there was some communication from the commission on the dog kennel numbers, I think that we came up with six.
It was, it was six, it was recommended through the animal control officer.
Okay.
And then, one additional acre for each dog, I think it was.
Right. Is that what it was?
Yeah. So, if anybody has issues with that, please get that, let us know.
That's in there, yeah.
Okay. And then, one other item that I think would be useful, and we did not talk about this last time, but in some recent reports in North Carolina and through the country, they're, they've been citing animal feedlots as a major source of contamination. And so, just by doing all that research in the cemetery subcommittee, I actually thought that even though we had, I think it was, either it's done by special use in the new ordinance, we might want to add a minimum setback requirement, just like we did with the cemeteries for drinking water wells. If they are a major source of contamination, we may want to utilize that same nine-hundred-foot setback to perennial streams, drinking waterways, and private wells. So, if anybody had any issues with that, I'd love to float it out there and see if we could add that for A-one feedlots. And of course, that would be for any new feedlots, not exist, I don't even think we have any existing feedlots in the county. Any questions? Does anybody else have other ideas? Because I think we want to get this to pretty close to finished and moved, moved out of our hands. Mr. Appicella? Oh, I saw you go for your buzzer.
I left it on.
Oh, okay. All right. So, what do we want to do with this? Can we, can you make those changes, and then we can visually see them at the next meeting? Or can we just make a motion to make those changes and then send it on to the board? Because we're not sending this to public hearing, correct?
Correct. Madam Chairman, you can do either one. If the commission wants to see the wording first before you send it forward to the board, we'll be happy to make those adjustments and bring it back to you.
Okay.
Or if you're satisfied with staff's ability to do that, you can just send it forward to the board tonight.
All right. What do we, what do we want to do, guys?
I would like to just see it one more time before sending it to the board.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, do we need a motion on that, or we can just say that? Deem it so?
Madam Chairman, it's your direction. We'll do it.
Okay. Perfect. All right. That sounds good. So, we'll have that back in the November fourteenth meeting for everybody to review. All right. Cluster ordinance, October thirtieth is our, is our meeting. So, if you guys are interested in the cluster map committee, please come on out and join us in a Halloween costume on October, October thirtieth. It's going to be in the ABC, and I think it's scheduled for seven PM. There's no time on here, but I think it was seven PM, because I think that Stephen gets in from work late.
Seven o'clock on Tuesday.
Yep. On Tuesday, October thirtieth, but you have to bring a Halloween costume. If you're coming and you're not part of the committee, you have to wear a Halloween costume.
You'll just have to...
Okay. Cluster ordinance policy subcommittee, Mr. Randall, you want to make this short and sweet?
After you just finish, sure. So, if you go to... If you go to the next thing on the agenda, you'll see a summary of our last meeting. We really just opened up some ideas that we were going to talk about. Our meeting, next meeting is tomorrow at six-thirty in the ABC room here at the government building. And so, we'll plan to dive into those definitions fairly significantly, and try to start knocking things out in preparation for final approval.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Perfect. I have no chairman's report. Other business, Garrisonville and Hartwood, you have some things on TRC. I need a motion for approval of minutes for September twenty-sixth. All right. We got a motion by Commissioner Boswell. Second by Commissioner Randall. Any discussion? All right. Let's vote. All right. Motion carries seven-zero. Meeting adjourned.
Hurry, you can get home and watch.